Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 10th, 2019 meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz. I want to begin the meeting by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Ms. Molly Burnham?
Here.
Ms. Rebecca Musiansky?
Here.
Ms. Laura Fallon?
Present.
Mr. Lonnie Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Howard Rohr?
Here.
Ms. Susan Voss?
Here.
Mr. Edmonton Howes?
Present.
Your honor, you have a forum.
Thank you very much. I do need to let the folks here in the audience know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. We now have our public comment period, so those members of the public who wish to speak, if you would, we don't have anyone signed.
No one's signed up.
No one's signed up. So if no, okay, certainly. If you haven't signed up, it's okay. You can still come forward.
We were discussing who was going to go first.
Okay. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes.
And I would ask, I'll have a three-minute timer, so we'll just ask people to please keep their remarks down to three minutes.
All right.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Francie Lynn. Did you want me to state my address?
Sure.
Okay. My address is 120 Hillcrest Drive in Florence, and I apologize if this sounds disjointed because I didn't come with anything prepared. But I'm here. I have a second grader at Leeds Elementary, and I'm here because I'm very concerned about some issues that he's been facing in the classroom that I think have to do with, partly with class size, but also with a lack of support in the classroom. I have been into the classroom, I used to go last year once a week when he was in first grade, and then I've been in a few times this year. And the class size is 24, which maybe doesn't sound like a lot, but in that class of 24, there are a lot of kids who are more than one child in terms of attention needed. There are like three or four children. And even the most experienced teacher, you know, I mean, she keeps, you know, pretty good control, but she has to keep stopping and starting the class, which I think is frustrating to a lot of kids. There's a lot of high-needs kids in class. She gets pulled out for conferences a lot, and a sub needs to take over for her when she does that, and when she comes back in, she kind of can't pick up the pieces again. And I see the effects of this in my own child, who is, you know, like a very quiet kid. He's not, you know, generally kind of keeps things together, holds things in. And I see him come home, and he's upset. He has a headache. He doesn't want to go to school in the morning, which is very unlike him because he loves school. And I just worry that this is something that's really becoming an issue because it started happening at the end of last year, and I had hoped that this would sort of, you know, new teacher, new classroom, everything would sort things out, and that just hasn't happened. In fact, it's gotten worse. And just from being in the classroom, I see also that, you know, I mean, I think when inclusion was sort of rolled out, it had been told to us that it was going to, you know, involve a lot of other teachers in the classroom. And I feel like people kind of pop in and out, but there's not like a permanent person in the classroom who is there to like take care of things, or like a permanent support teacher, which I think would be really helpful. And I feel like the kids who are high-needs also aren't kind of getting like the, I mean, last year when I was in the classroom, there would be like kids sort of like under the table, you know, who were perhaps on the spectrum or something like that. And I just feel like that, you know, they didn't get the attention they needed. The kids who were sort of more mainstream didn't get the attention they needed. And while I am fully in support of inclusion, I just feel like it is not working well. And I've talked to many other, I tried to rally a bunch of like second-grade parents to come also, although I think it was a little late notice. But, you know, they have some issues also, and we're all huge supporters of the North Hampton Public Schools and the North Hampton Teachers. And it's painful for us to, you know, be sort of disappointed and frustrated and seeing our kids struggle this way. And it's sort of a process spectrum, like the kids who are more mainstream. I talked to like parents of high-needs kids who also feel like their kids' needs aren't being met, and so I just wanted to ask you all to, you know, maybe come up with the funding to figure out more support for the teachers in the classroom. And that's all I have to say for tonight. And I will put my name down here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment?
Hey, everyone. Pete Cardoso, 135 Hillcrest Drive. I am also here for the same reasons as Francie. My daughter is in the other second-grade class at Leeds, and I think that the two second-grade teachers at Leeds are the most experienced teachers at Leeds right now, and they are really struggling with the class sizes of 24 kids in each class. We did get a letter home last week that said, to try and handle this situation, they are splitting the kids in each class up into two groups for special reading attention. So 12 and 12, 12 will be taken out of the classroom for reading, and 12 will stay in with the teacher. So it's a temporary solution to a long-term problem. The second grade, there are two second grades, there are two third grades, there are two fourth grades, but outside of those, there are three classes. And so there has been talk about adding another third-grade class once the second graders go into that. I've been hearing some feedback from the teachers that they just need more support in the classroom. And it's even, it's an issue in the first grade, too. They're having to, there are kids who are having issues, and they're having to clear the classroom to be able to deal with that. And if they had some more, a full-time resource in the classroom, they might be able to keep situations from getting out of hand like that. So I'm here with Francie trying to advocate for getting some more permanent help in the classrooms, in particular, second grade at Leeds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Luke Ratcliffe. This is my wife, Melissa Ratcliffe. We live at 25 Leonard Street in Leeds. We're here speaking in the same vein as you've been hearing. Our son and daughter are both students at Leeds in second grade and kindergarten, and we've noticed in the last two years the class sizes in Leeds have been growing and growing, especially with the inclusion of the, or with the inclusion program. I think it was promised as one thing, and I think everybody's trying to do what they can do to make it be what it was promised, but we're just falling short of that, and it's making for a hectic and loud classroom environment, especially for kids that generally are quiet, pay attention. They're just getting drowned out by the sheer volume, just the noise in the classroom. And our son is one of them. He's a pretty quiet kid, reserved kid, and he's having a hard time focusing, staying on task, and actually just listening to the teacher because of the cocofinings going on in the room. We're concerned, too, with our daughter being in kindergarten, there's, I think there's three classes now, right? There's three classes now. One of them is, you know, they're sort of getting larger, but the kindergarten, they have a great full-time help. They have, what is it, two people in each classroom?
At least two.
At least two people, sometimes three, a floating third person in each classroom. But when this, you know, these classes move on to this first grade, second grade, where there's only right now one teacher, possibly hiring a third teacher for the same number of kids, it's going to be, it's going to be a mess like the second grade is right now. So we're just here to advocate for our kids.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Alyssa Emmerich, and I live on Chestnut Ave. in Leeds, and I have a daughter who's in fourth grade at Leeds, and I don't have anything prepared because they were just talking about this right before the meeting. But I just wanted to come in and echo what a lot of parents have been telling me. My children are older. My daughter's in fourth grade, and my older children are in middle school and at Smith-Vogue. And, oh, sorry, my alarm's going off. See, I'm not 100% prepared. But my children are older, and talking to people who their oldest child is the same, is in fourth grade, and they have younger children, some of the things that they're telling me about Leeds and happening at the school, I'm not hearing about because my children are not in it. And some of it kind of surprises me because I know, having had three kids go through Leeds, and having had one of the class, my son's class was actually one that Mr. Kanata marked as particularly energetic. And even with those years and the things that that group went through, it sounds like things are getting more difficult for the younger grades right now. And so while I don't have direct experience in the classroom, like some of the other parents that we've just heard, and other people that I have heard talking on the playground or in after-school activities, I do recognize that it's coming from multiple people and multiple groups because we do different kinds of things, and I have kids in different groups. So I hear different families. It's not just certain families. And that it is getting more difficult, and that the support that our teachers need and that the students themselves need is not there. And so I'm just, I'm just here to echo what I hear and hope that you guys would consider it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment this evening? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Are there any announcements from members of the school committee? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommended actions. We have a consent agenda this evening that contains the approval of the minutes of the September 12th, 2019 school committee, as well as multiple field trip requests. The Leeds fifth-grade trip to Nature's Classroom in Beckett, November 5th through the 8th of 2019. The JFK Chorus going to Broadway Theater in New York, New York, April 29th, 2020. The NHS Coral Program going to New York City Broadway West Side Story, April 1st, 2020. And then the JFK eighth graders' French department going to Quebec City, Canada, May 22nd through the 24th, 2020. And then we have, do we have budget transfers? I believe we do. No budget transfers on this agenda?
Well, actually, there is one, but it's not on the consent.
Not on the consent agenda. Okay, just verifying that. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Don't move. Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that we remove the JFK Chorus trip and the NHS Coral Program trip from the consent agenda.
Okay. So the JFK Chorus and the NHS Coral, those two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any others?
I'd like to remove the meeting notes.
The meeting notes. Okay. Anything else?
I have the same thing as Dr. Voss.
Okay.
Removing the minutes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So then...
I also have a question, so I guess I'll ask to remove the, I just have a question on it, but the eighth-grade French trip.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Problem. So we're down to one last, one last remaining item on the consent agenda.
It looks to me on this agenda that the budget transfer is on the consent agenda, and I would also like to remove that.
Okay.
If it is. That's how it looks, but...
Okay.
I think because maybe there's nothing under, and it's not on there.
Oh, I'm sorry. It just says budget transfers.
I don't see this transfer.
Okay.
I think it's just like a standard set of headings. It caught me, too. That's why I was verifying. Yeah, there's no bullet under it. Okay, so we're down to a consent agenda of one that would be voting on the Leeds fifth-grade Nature's Classroom trip to Beckett. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So now let's take up the items that were taken off. Let's take them in order. The approval of minutes, did you wish?
Yes, I'd like to ask to postpone it simply because I have, apparently they were just emailed out, but I have not seen them.
Okay.
I don't know. I was thinking I had missed them, but if they had just come out, I just haven't had the time to read them, and I'd like to read them.
Okay. So you're saying the same. Okay, excellent. So...
I saw them. I just haven't had a chance.
Okay. So then the motion would be to postpone consideration until our next meeting. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so those, consideration of those minutes are postponed until the next meeting. Next, the JFK Chorus. Actually, Ms. Fallon, do you want to raise your questions about the two, the JFK Chorus and the NHS Coral Program?
So I'm certainly not going to oppose the trips. I know that their kids are really excited. The planning's already happened, but I know we approve this on an annual basis, and I did just want to raise the question for next year. I love the way they work in the curriculum framework and the standards this meets and seeing live music, but the fact that our, the students are spending three to three and a half hours each way on a bus to New York City, and then three hours to see the show seems like a lot of travel. The total cost at almost $11,000 seems very expensive, and we keep talking about how the city's working and how the schools are working to do things for the environment. It seems like these opportunities are offered in Springfield and Hartford and Boston and maybe even at UMass. So I would just like to say maybe we could start thinking about more local opportunities or in the Berkshires. I don't know. Because I know we've always done it, and maybe there's nothing that can compare to the Broadway experience, but I know for some students and parents have said it's a struggle to be on a bus for seven hours, and to then sit through a three-hour show on top of that is just a lot for some kids who are struggling, so.
Okay. So having raised those objections, or just those, pointing those things out for future reference, would you move to at least approve the current trips?
Yes, I would. So move to approve. Do I need to do it separately, or can I do it?
You can do it together.
Okay. Move to approve the JFK Middle School Chorus trip to New York City and the NHS Coral Program trip to New York City.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and then I'll turn to Ms. Voss and ask you about the JFK eighth-grade French trip.
Okay, thank you. So my question related to all of these, and it echoes what Ms. Fallon just said about the total cost. And I just wanted to clarify because the total cost to New York each trip was on the order of $10,000, and I think maybe this is per person because 50 kids going to Montreal for three days, it's $640. And I just wanted to, it's a much better deal than going to New York City. I just wanted to clarify.
It's exchange rate.
Yeah.
I'm going to guess it's per person, and that seems okay. I just figured that out as I was sitting here, but it just, I was going to just try to figure out why these were so different. So is that what it is, do we think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds about right.
Thanks.
So would you make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Yes, do you have a...
I actually do. I just, I have an eighth grader, and I'm wondering if I should not vote on this. Does that...
It's just giving permission for children to leave the city, so I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any financial issue involved. So, okay. So all those in favor of approving the Quebec City trip, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the field trips have all now been approved, and the minutes have been postponed until the next meeting. We'll now move into the reports and recommendations section, and we will turn to our student representative, Eleanor Harden, for the student representative report.
So not much has changed since the last time we spoke about what we're, you know, working on. It's still pretty new in the year, and we've only had a few meetings. So we're still in the process of figuring out what exactly we're going to work on, but we do know that we're going to continue working on, and we are continuing to work on the vaping issue, which I just talked about, and as well as the achievement gap issue. So for vaping, like I said, we're mainly focusing on how we are going to help students, you know, who have addictions, and we're reaching out to different resources in our community. And then for the achievement gap, we're reaching out to Reel and the Students of Color Alliance Club at our school. Members of that club are going to attend our next meeting, and we're just, we're planning, I think, for that issue, we're really focusing on getting as much information as we can to move forward. I also just had a meeting with Mr. Provost about the, or Dr. Provost, sorry, about the issue, and I'm planning on sharing that information at our next meeting, what we talked about. So, yeah. And then just some information about what's going on at the high school. Romeo and Juliet, the play, is starting to have rehearsals, and is kicking off. Booster Week is coming up in the next, in two weeks, which will be fun. And then we also have a new literary magazine called Heartstrings that is going to go into publication on October 31st. So, yeah. Very, thank you.
Thank you very much for that report, Eleanor. Appreciate it. Now we'll move into item B, the capital improvement requests. And these, of course, are the annual capital improvement projects that all city departments, including the school departments, submit, are required to submit to the city as part of the annually required development of a capital improvement program, a five-year capital improvement program. So I know that we have requests that are coming from school maintenance as well as IT, and there were copies of them in the packets. And I believe Mr. Pagan is here. I don't know if it's Tony.
I'm Tony tonight.
Yeah, okay. Dr. Provost will be playing a part of Tony this evening.
[laughing]
West Side Story.
[laughing]
But, so, yes, so there, I don't know if you want to give an overview. You were sent copies of the request forms that all departments are required to submit. So do you want to just give a quick overview of those, or...
Sure. So we have, we have capital requests in three broad areas. One is facilities. That's the part that I'll be presenting on Tony's behalf. A lot of those requests you'll see have to do with the new executive order around reducing our carbon footprint as we operate our schools. Then we have a number of technology upgrades necessary in order to keep our infrastructure functional as we have larger quantities of data being transmitted second by second through our schools. And then the third have to do with the ongoing replacements of student transportation vehicles. And I'm going to grab that one if Mr., while Mr. Pagan presents, if that's okay, because that one seems to have disappeared from my packet.
Okay, sure. Mr. Pagan, do you want to...
So we have three projects. Two of them are basically continuation of multi-year projects, and one is new. The first one is the switches update. We are basically replacing the switches throughout the whole city network, including the one at the schools. This is a three-year project, and we are on the third and final point of it. This request is basically for the, for the last few switches that have not been replaced. We are right now in the, in the process of replacing the main switches at the schools. Some of them were replaced with state funding. It was not capital funding, actually, a bigger amount, like $170,000 of funding from the state was used for, for the rest on the school side. The...
Mr. Pagan?
...system replacement will be...
Antonio, could you, just for laypeople who may not understand, because they hear switches and they think, oh, there's a switch over there on the wall, could you just describe how, what the importance of switches to the networking of our, of our...
Sure.
...data systems around the...
So we have a fiber loop that interconnects all the buildings in the city. We have about 169 strands of fiber that works over through, through all the buildings. And we have two hubs, meaning two points of concentration, one at the municipal building and fire station on the city side, and one at the high school on the school side. In order for those pairs of fiber to function, we need to put electronics, and that's what we call the core switches are. Basically, these are equipment that are about $8,000 each, and I'm talking about one piece of equipment without all the modules that get into it, and electronics, which are transceivers, that are the ones that make the connection between, between servers. In order for our buildings to function with any kind of technology, doesn't matter what technology is, we need to have enough bandwidth to get that running. And we provide not only the connectivity under, under bandwidth, but we provide redundancy. So every time that we have traffic from one building to another, we have at least two more ways to get to those two points. And that is because, you know, we have had in, over the years, this fiber loop has been running for 10 years now, and over the years, we have had accidents that have broken, broke some fibers. We have squeeters breaking fibers, and nobody has noticed any interruption because of the redundancy that we have. But that redundancy is expensive because we have to pay for the fiber, and we have to pay for the extra equipment to do it. It's basically, I can get more technical, but that's basically...
No, no, I just wanted people to understand what the switches were. Okay.
So the server system replacement, again, we, we have been modernizing the, the infrastructure at the schools and the, and the city. The city actually has done this before the schools. Previous years, we, we spend a great amount of money to modernize the, the server systems. And two things that, that we gain with that is efficiency. So basically, we have systems that last a little longer, but they are much more responsive to manage and basically minimize the downtime. On the schools, it has been taking a little longer, mostly because of funding structure and because of the, the kind of equipment that we had in the past. And replacing is not, is not simple to do. So we, this is the second year of a replacement. We are in the process right now to implement the new system that is going to replace with one system. We're going to replace about five servers that are in production right now. And the second part of the project is to create some redundancy on that system where we will be able to run some servers, not all of them, here at the JFK location, if something happens at the, at the high school. And finally, the directory service migration, this is something that most people don't know about, but we've been running Novell, which is a directory service from the 90s, and we haven't been able to replace it at the school. I think that about 2% to 3% of the world networks are running on Novell, and the rest are using Microsoft, so we are on the minority side. The problem with having a system, even though it's a system that is up-to-date, they keep doing upgrades every year, the problem is that we have less and less people with the expertise. And when we try to integrate systems with our network, it's always problematic. And we all know what happened last year when we tried to put a very modern system for controlling the printers, and it didn't work with Novell, and we were months and months trying to resolve the problem because the support service people for, for the new printer system couldn't understand how to work with Novell. And it was really painful to, to implement. So, and we have that every time we try to integrate any system. We are very behind on integration. Right now, we work staff in, in the schools. They need to memorize about six or seven passwords where in most cases, when integration is available with one or two passwords, you can work on all the applications. So we're not able to implement things like that right now. So we need to move forward to implement this new system, which is in use in most places, but we don't have it. Questions?
Are there questions about the three IT projects that have been submitted? Okay.
I have, I just have a couple of questions. So just so I understand the bigger picture, I'm curious, I completely understand why you want to go to Active Directory. That makes a lot of sense. And I'm curious, is the money just to pay consultants, I would assume, to drag the stuff over, or it's not for hardware or anything?
No, it's, it's only consulting.
It's a lot of work to move it. And, and related to that, I was just wondering how we're thinking about when it gets moved, is it going to the servers that you're buying, or is it going in the cloud? And I'll give you all my questions at once, because this is really what I'm curious about. Where is it moving to, and how are we thinking about that? Why is the, whatever the decision is, why was it made that way? And then, long-term, do we need as many servers, or are we moving our stuff to the cloud? And the final question is, what kinds of stuff do we refuse to put on the cloud? What do we keep on the servers? And, you know, what, where are we now? What are the issues, and where are we going?
Okay. Very good question. So the vision for, for technology at the schools, similar to the city, is to use the cloud as much as possible so that we don't depend on on-premise hardware, because it's always problematic to maintain. There are, I think in the school, the majority of the data is served is on the cloud, so we don't depend on on-premise for, for, on-premise for, for data. It's served, basically, all the systems that we use for data. We depend mostly for management of, for example, wireless system needs several servers to run.
Yeah.
So that's one area that could be on the cloud, but we decided to do it on the, on-premise many years ago, and we're keeping it that way. It makes sense to keep it that way. Managing of air conditioning, door controls, cameras, all those kinds of things, we, we keep it low. keep it local. We have file servers for administration. We don't rely on Google for finances and, and other areas of administration, we use it locally. The servers, well, let me go into one more direction. For Novell Directory Services, which is similar to Active Directory, it's just a different brand and a different way of dealing with it. We use basically servers that we host virtually. So we are going to replace those servers with another virtual server, but on Microsoft. Microsoft licensing is done on volume, so it's not going to increase the price of the license because it's basically just covered by the volume license for education, which is a very advantageous way of, of doing licensing. And because we are using virtualized environment for servers, we are not buying more hardware to implement Active Directory, we just basically shut down two or three Novell servers and we might spin up two or three Microsoft servers. So it's a, it's a one-to-one relationship there, internal replacement. And it doesn't add to the load of the virtualized environment, it basically keeps pretty comparable.
Okay, and let's do one quick, so all the other stuff is in the cloud, so for example,
Information System.
Do we, do we put it in the Google Cloud or do we put it in the Microsoft Cloud or both? And do we have some sort of protection? I mean, I guess maybe it would be more secure, one or the other. I'm just wondering where all this other data goes if it's not on our servers.
We, we depend on third-party clouds. All our systems are hosted by all the companies, not by ours. And part of what, the, the process that we do is as we engage with these companies is we ensure that the data privacy policies that they use are compatible with our data privacy.
But do we pay or is it, like, I'm just trying to understand, moving forward, if we're getting rid of servers, do we pay for this cloud storage? Is it free? Is there a difference if it's free? Is it less secure? How do we think about that?
We don't, currently, we don't pay for any cloud storage. We are not using any cloud storage at this point. We are not planning to use cloud storage. We, we use basically software as a service. And software as a service, for example, Follett is a huge company that has a cloud and they host their Aspen software in their cloud, it's a private cloud. And we pay a license to use it. But we don't pay for storage.
Thanks, thanks, okay.
Similar to Munis on the city side.
Similar to Munis, Munis, we, it's a private cloud. They, they host our servers in, in their facilities and we consider it a cloud, they might consider something else. But we consider it a cloud in the sense, and we don't pay for storage, we pay for the licensing and the support.
Thanks.
Other questions about the, Mr. Pagan's projects? Okay? Thank you so much. We don't like our own private cloud usually. The, how about questions about the other facilities related?
Well, I haven't presented those yet.
Okay.
Or the, could I do the buses first?
Please do.
Okay, so there are two other sets of capital requests. First directing your attention to the one prepared by Kami Lamica. This is basically transportation and point of sale. So two things I'd like to point out are changes in the capital requests. These bus replacements have been planned in the capital request for a long time, but our prior plan was to replace buses with buses. As you know, there's an extreme shortage of bus drivers at this time. And so we are changing that recommendation to replace our buses with vans because it's a much lower level of licensing and we have more success, we believe, in getting drivers. So it does reduce the number of students we can transport to a certain extent, but not having bus drivers drastically reduces the amount of students that we can transport. So that's a change. And then just a food service point of sale upgrade, this is something that happens periodically in order to keep our food service department compliant with the federal school lunch program. So there are other items in the out-years, including the walk-in cooler for JFK and a bus replacement for a 30-passenger wheelchair bus, which at this point, we think we will need to maintain as a bus, but that's not on the, on the plan for 21, it's on the plan for 22.
Are there questions about those transportation-related items?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a little bit about the buses. If we have a shortage of bus drivers, what, why would we want smaller buses because it seemed, or vans? Because it seems like if you could put more kids on a vehicle, you would need fewer drivers.
So the roots that our drivers are, are running are really specialized transportation within the city. And there, that's one type of transportation they do. The other type of transportation they do are roads that are not easily navigated by large buses. So going to a larger bus would not necessarily serve our needs in that way.
Another question, and I'm sorry, we haven't had a budget and property subcommittee meeting, and I think this is probably more appropriate to go into depth there, but you can, you know, tell me what you think. But since we are here and we can bring it up, I have been really interested in talking to people about moving forward with electric buses and potentially these vans, and I don't want us to lose sight of that. What's incredibly exciting is there's some big grants out there right now. The VW settlement for when they cheated on emissions, and we've just missed the first round, unfortunately, last week, but there's a second round coming. And I would really like to encourage us to be in a position to apply for this. My understanding is right now in the first round, they'll pay 80% of the electric vehicle, and 80% of the electric vehicle is a lot more than 100% of one of these. And we have excess solar, I believe, during the day, certain times of year, that could be used to charge these vehicles. And I, I know there's been pilot programs, there's been problems with them, a lot of the problems have been solved. So I just want to encourage us as a group to think forward, part of what North Hampton's trying to do to become more, use less fossil fuels, this would fit right in. And I, I think these grants are going to go quickly and I don't want us to miss the boat on them. So I just want to make sure we keep track of that. Thanks.
I was curious, what's the difference between, how many kiddos can be on these vans versus a bus?
So I am somewhat punting on this answer, but most vans, I believe, are about eight to 10. These are wheelchair vans, so it would be less than that if they were transporting a student with a wheelchair. The wheelchair buses are 30, 30 passengers. So it's a, it's a significant reduction from the bus to a van.
Other questions about this set of things? Okay, next.
So next, I will go to the central services capital requests. And I would ask you to, to look for the one that was mailed later in the day rather than the one that came out originally with your packet, because there were some late additions to it. So you should be looking at one that ends with district offices, space, use, design and upgrades. So on your sheet, on your sheet, instead of going just chronologically or in order down the page, I would like to try to present them thematically. So if you can go to the second high on your high priority on your list, you'll see a number of facility assessments. This is really the first in a long project, which are all related to compliance with the executive order around trying to reduce our emissions from schools. So the first high priority is $60,000 for greenhouse gas emissions assessment at Bridge, Leeds and Jackson Street School. And then you'll see in 2022, there's a second $60,000 for assessments at the other schools. These other items that you see in the out-years following on that are related to energy are in anticipation of what we think some of the deficiencies will be identified, or some of, another way of putting it is opportunities to become more energy efficient, more carbon neutral. So you see that Ryan Road, Jack, Leeds, Jackson Street School, all have energy management system upgrades and out-years. Those are to implement what we think the findings will be of the assessments that are being done in the first years. So also the Leeds boiler replacement, the Bridge Street boiler replacement. The strategy being followed in all of these to go along with something that I know is a very strong priority of the school committee, is when there's a need to replace something, using it as an opportunity to replace it with something that is more energy efficient and more environmentally friendly. So those are, all those energy-related ones. There are two here that are sort of happening outside of the project, and those are the JFK energy management system upgrades. These are really phase two and phase three of Johnson Controls update that we're doing on the energy system in order to really just keep the energy system functioning at its current level of efficiency. One of the things, they're really two main players in the HVAC system for large municipal buildings. One is Johnson Controls, the other is Automatic Automated Logic. And both of them have replacement cycles that basically have you more or less continuously replacing components of your heating system. So that's those ones. Also, there is a study this year on high school track resurfacing. High school track is reaching the end of its predicted lifespan. So the study is just to assess the current status of the track and what are the best options for resurfacing. You'll see in 2023 is the year we're projecting that that project would need to move forward. Next come some big projects. The next building that's going to need a roof is JFK. And you can see that right now we have that projected as a two-part project in '23 and '24. Both of those would have to be MSBA projects, so there would be reimbursement involved, but would be an extremely costly capital project, so we need to begin planning for that. The JFK window repairs is not an efficiency repair. This is just to repair some problems with our current windows. There are many windows that have lifting mechanisms that are now, now either not functional or barely functional, and so just replacing those so that the windows function properly, that's what those costs are. And then the Leeds, the Leeds flooring replacement, this is part of a general updating scheduled for Leeds. There are, we would be replacing some of the older tiles, which are tiles that include asbestos and are part of our abatement plan with newer tiles that do not include asbestos. We do have two tests going on right now. We replaced a classroom at Ryan Road and we replaced a classroom at the high school this past year with a new non-asbestos containing material. And so we're seeing how that, how that material holds up. That probably is the material that we're going to go with at Leeds, that's what the, these two amounts are. Wouldn't necessarily be the same exact color or the same exact design as what we have at the high school or at Ryan Road, because there are literally thousands of colors and shapes and different options that are available within this material. But that's what we project, we would be doing the replacement of the flooring at Leeds with. And so then, next, JFK paving. Again, that's not for this year, but again, just ongoing updating of the blacktop for parking. The next one, which is high, is window replacement at Leeds. Those are energy-related projects. Think that those also would likely be something that we would attempt to get MSBA funding for, especially the $250,000 project. The walk-in freezer at the middle school is an energy-related project. This is a new type of control that is, has been shown to reduce the electrical usage of the freezer at big walk-in freezers. Has something to do with the way that air is recycled within the freezer when the, when the doors open so that there's less of a energy loss. And then, so you see, we have more flooring upgrades. Again, that's more of the same, replacing the old, the old material with the newer material. And then an accessibility up, upgrade for the nurses' room. This is to, at, at Ryan Road School, this is to provide access for students who use wheelchairs and require higher lifting, but also are ready to begin, begin using the bathroom. And so they need a specialized place where this can happen. We did have $150,000 that was approved in prior year for general bathroom upgrades at Ryan Road School. So this is really a request to add about $75,000 to that original request, which is, hasn't been spent yet, and to direct that funding to refurbishing the nurses' restroom in order to provide for the students' needs. The other benefit of doing this, this upgrade at Ryan Road is it would provide an all-gender bathroom that Ryan Road is the only school, I believe, right now where students requesting an all-gender bathroom still use the nurses' space. This is adjacent to the nurses' space, this wouldn't be the same thing as going to the nurse to use the restroom. And then the last is design and upgrades for office space. This is the superintendent's office. We've had additions through the years, mainly in the area of curriculum and curriculum. As I think you know from our last meeting, is a very bustling, bustling office within the office. It has been created some noise distractions, which have impaired the production of minutes and impaired some of the other functioning of folks who work within the office. We did have Roy Brown come in and do some design. So basically what it would be is closing off office spaces, providing more soundproofing in office spaces for the workers within the superintendent's office. And then one I did skip, which was a mistake I want to go back to, is the fire curtain at the high school. This has been something that we've been talking about replacing for a while. Obviously, we will, would still be talking about replacing this for a while if this is approved, because this is for FY '23. But if you have spent time on the stage and get up close to the curtain, you can see that it's really showing its age and it needs to be replaced. Unfortunately, it's a very costly curtain, it's a $50,000 curtain. So that's why this is a capital request. And those are the facilities capital requests.
Are there any questions about the facilities requests? Yes, Ms. Sands, Ms. Sandsky?
So on the JFK roof replacement, which, you know, looks like a really large chunk of money, when you say we would get reimbursement, do you have any, we might get or be able to do it through MSBA? What, do you know what that might look like? How much of a cover and, or expense of it?
So every project is rated on its own economics at the time. I think the last two projects, three projects that we did had reimbursement rate, I want to say around 56%.
Okay, so we'd still be responsible for that other, that still leaves almost one and a half million?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Coughlin?
Hi, thank you very much, Dr. Provost. That was very helpful to find out all these things. One of the things that you and I spoke about, and you might not know this, but just as a reminder, was there any discussion or update on making the gardens accessible?
Yes, there was. That is not on this capital list because I believe Central Services has some funds that they can use to, to put towards that. But I did have a conversation with Mr. Kuzneers about it earlier this week.
Okay, so you're sounding optimistic.
I am cautiously optimistic, yes. There's another piece of that project, actually, which is also to install a wheelchair accessible swing. So we would hope to try to do both of those things.
Would, would this be at one school or an multiple school?
That would be at Ryan Road.
Yeah, could you, there's a, I, thank you, first off, for presenting this. Second, I really appreciate the steps that we're taking to, you know, as we, as we all say, to move our city in the, toward greener energy. And I was just reading, for example, how important freezers and refrigeration is hugely important, much more important than any of us actually take into account, it turns out. Would you talk to us a little bit about the, the, I think it's- Would you talk to us a little bit about the, I think it's the HVAC systems, like the management system upgrades there?
Controls.
Controls, how we hope that that might support better heating and
So.
And which schools might need it more, or, you know?
So there, there are two different components of this. One was just the controllers, which is the JFK Management System upgrades. Those are upgrades that I don't see as having a significant impact on our energy efficiency other than sort of the pollution avoidance of letting our system become out of date.
Right.
So these are just maintaining the controllers. So the thing with Johnson Controls, in my experience, is that the components are built with a limited lifespan, and so when you have any kind of a large heating system, there's a certain number of controllers that need to be replaced basically every year. And so this is the cost of maintaining those. It's not really the cost of installing something that's going to be new and create a performance improvement for us. However, if we didn't do it, then the system would, its efficiency would degrade, and we would be burning more fossil fuels. The other types of upgrades that you see here, like the Ryan Road Energy Management System upgrade, the Leeds Energy Management upgrade, Jackson Street Energy Management upgrades, we are anticipating those as implementing the recommendations that come out of this assessment that's planned in year one. So I can't tell you what those would be. These are really placeholder numbers. But our expectation is that those would be real changes to systems that could create better efficiency. Likewise, when you see the boiler replacement for Bridge Street School in Leeds, we believe we'll be replacing with newer boiler technology, with more efficient boiler technology. I think that there's always going to have to be a boiler of some extent, because every building has a hot water need. But I also can envision a future where 100% of the healing, heating might not be through boilers. Some of it might be through mini splits or other types of technology. We really won't know that until we find out what happens in our assessment, if this is approved.
Okay, so the assessment will help us lead to more green technology in our schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Colvin.
Yeah, Mayor Norquist, I'm wondering if, it's my understanding that the approval process here, where the money resides and how it gets approved and whether it gets approved, is far different than our school budget process. So I was wondering, either before or after we vote on this, for the public, can you give like a one- and two-minute overview on what the steps would be to, for us to acquire the funding to do this?
Sure. So the, the, all of the city departments and the two school districts, both Smith Vocational and NPS, submit their, submit their requests. And I have a, I, every year, appoint a screening committee of sorts, a capital improvement committee, that helps go through all of those various projects. They actually interview department heads, and it's a combination of, I do have a representative of the school committee on that, I have a representative of the city council. I also have people who are from the community. So I have some community members who have expertise, particularly in this sort of capital management. And basically, what they do is help us try to prioritize what are like the highest priority, you know, medium priority, long-term priority, and, and make recommendations to me about those. And again, this is a process that has to happen every year, so we're constantly updating the five-year program. We then are required to come up with a five-year program that shows what we believe are our top, are our priorities, and we also have to be able to identify potential funding sources. So we can't say, you know, we want to build the superconducting supercollider, and it'll cost $10 trillion, and, you know, but we actually have to be able to say like, and this is how we would actually pay for it. So that in itself is just like a planning document, and it's a requirement, again, of the charter. I think the idea is that, you know, we want to always be taking care of our infrastructure and capital and always, you know, planning ahead for replacement. So then that goes to the, the plan, the program itself goes to the city council. They usually have a public hearing on it, review it, and then they vote to either approve or disapprove of the program. It doesn't actually commit any funds, it doesn't commit any borrowing authority, it doesn't commit any appropriation authority. And then separately from that, typically after the program has been approved, then we bring forward, I will recommend, a series of council orders, either for, you know, using funds from our capital stabilization funds, using our free cash that gets certified every year, and in some cases for larger projects, like the roof projects, borrowing authority. So for the large, those $1.5 million, you know, roof projects, I'll be asking for borrowing authority. And then those go through the typical financial process that the council has to approve any borrowing or appropriation. So that's sort of the process.
Thank you, yeah. So right now, we're, if, if this gets approved by us, then it would go to, it would then go to the city council?
It would actually first go to the capital improvement process. Yeah, it wouldn't go directly to the city council. Yeah. It would go through the capital improvement program process. And again, you know, the DPW is submitting these sheets, and other departments are, and then we're trying to assess them, sort them, in some cases, fit them into a five-year cycle, you know, understanding like what our, what our debt capacity is, what, what debt is being paid off on a project and freeing up debt capacity. So we're trying to figure out, okay, you know, you wanted it in year 2022, but we can't actually, we don't think we can actually fit it in there, so we're going to have to push it off, or we're going to divide this into two. So there's a further refinement that happens.
Yeah, I see.
And then the total program gets, gets published, there's a, there's a review period and a hearing, and then, then we move into, okay, now we want to actually bring forward orders to actually fund them. So you're actually, what's happening here is you're sort of giving the superintendent the approvals to submit these projects.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
There's a number of steps.
Yes, and I think in the past, yeah, so I think this is just trying to make sure that the school committee is aware of the projects that are being submitted.
Right, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So as a rep, I am the representative of the school committee on the capital improvement, so if you have any questions, I could maybe help answer those. But I think what I would like to share is that there are department heads from, throughout the city that come, and we screen those and listen to the needs. And there is millions and millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of requests every year. And the amount of money that actually ends up being identified through the mayor's office that can be put towards the projects is substantially smaller than the requests every year. So with that said, when, when the requests come from the school department, it's important that the ones that are most important are rated the highest. And so as you're looking at your, at your information in front of you, the ones that have high next to them are the ones that we, as a committee, will look at and try to, to the best of our ability, or myself in particular, will advocate strongly for those in the current year. In this case, it would be FY 2021. And things that really catch the attention, I can tell you, of the committee are things that we call like essentials, so like anything that is like life safety, for example. So when the fire department or the police department come, or there's something that's occurring in our school department in regards to security measures around school entry points and things like that, that usually catches the attention of the committee. Things like roofs and boilers, there's an understanding on the committee that those types of things are essential to the overall health and well-being, not only of the building and its preservation, but the people that use them and, and are sheltered by them. So those are the types of things that the committee looks at and tries to honor when the requests come up. But as I said before, with so many requests and so much need, that things that are labeled as medium or pushed out to out-years, sometimes those just keep getting pushed out and pushed out. And so I just encourage the school department, as, as I can see they have done, to really prioritize them using the high, medium, and low as a, as a kind of a understanding for the folks that'll be kind of going through these, to understand that they are, they are high-needs items at this time.
Thanks. Saying that, I respectfully ask that you really do take the climate, the changes that we can do to our schools to support lessening our effect on the climate as a high, I mean, everything here is, in that nature is, but it becomes suddenly, you know, as important as safety or, you know, all of that.
Sure, yeah. So I, I mean, I try to cover everything. I'd also say that's a really important item as well. There's been so much work done in the city to try to
Yeah.
Work towards that goal. And so, yeah, for sure, anytime efficiencies can be had, those are looked at really important projects as well. Not just energy efficiencies, but efficiencies that will help sustain our planet
Our planet, yes.
As a place of living, so, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Fallon.
Can you just explain to me, if we know that we're going to need to have the track resurfaced for $200,000 in the next few years, why we would spend $15,000 on a study in advance of that?
I can't, because I'm not an expert at it. I do know that frequently, whenever there's any kind of a large capital project, there is a study phase before you actually begin work. Sometimes you discover problems that you don't know that you had. Sometimes you discover opportunities that you might not know about if you don't do some work looking around before you actually begin the project.
The other thing I would say is that for a public construction project of that size, typically that study would also produce the bid drawings or the bid documents. That would be, I think, part of the process that you need to actually bid the project. That's typically, you know, when you do a large construction over $100,000, you typically have to have, first, you have to hire first a designer or an architect to actually produce the bid drawing. So it's a highly specialized, probably, process. So I'm assuming
I mean, it's around track. Like, I'm just saying, I can barely draw, but if it were a building, I'd get it, but it's track.
I get it, but in terms of the composition and the structure and the, you know,
Drainage.
Drainage.
Whenever the
It's fields right next to it. All right.
So I just
Certainly, I can speak to that, because it's come up before, and that's exactly right. I mean, it is around track, and you would think that
Oval.
Or, yeah, oval. You, you would think that that part of the design is pretty straightforward, but there have been drainage issues and areas of sag within the, within, you know, the overall structure of the track. And so I think that would really want to be looked at, especially putting that type of money into it, to make sure that if there's anything that can be done in order to maybe stop that from happening the next time, that that would be in the plan before it had been.
Thanks, I figured there was an explanation.
Sure.
And then
Two more.
I think it's my annual comment on this, which is that parking lots, I always think are rated too high, just because hopefully people are driving at low speeds in the parking lots. And so the concern about the condition of the surface, for me, is much lower than if it was a street that people are going at higher speeds on. And so that's the first one, is that I think they, I really think it's okay if parking lot's surface aren't in perfect condition. And then the second one is twofold. Just asphalt itself is a tremendous greenhouse gas producer. I think the highway resurfacing in this country is one of those things, like 20% of the greenhouse gas emissions from, from roads, because of all the solvents in asphalt. So, so considering the surface material, both from that point of view, but also from a, just looking at the construction of it in terms of stormwater management, because parking lots are a huge source of stormwater and stress on the, on the flooding situation in the city. So I think basically parking lots are much more complicated than, sort of like tracks, much more complicated in terms of their impacts. And so both, to do them right, I think, costs more. To not do them at all costs a lot less, and is maybe something you can live with. So basically, to consider parking lots maybe more than we might, because they seem like such a innocuous thing.
I just have a couple of comments on that. I've sat on the capital improvements committee for a number of years and listened to the DPW come forward and explain the reasoning that these projects become so expensive over time, and how if we could really tackle them right when they be problematic, then it would be actually cheaper, although it's tremendously expensive then as well.
Yeah.
Because as the underlayment and the rest of the kind of support system below it gets eroded as well, you just can't patch over it, because it's even worse.
And that's, and that's where, again, you know, then it's a matter for me of looking at it. The next question is, is do we want to redesign our parking lots
Sure.
For having to do a stormwater management, or is do we, if, if we're, again, take the opportunity to do something with the parking lot, maybe we want to do more than just simply maintain it at, you know, in its 1960s quality?
Sure.
No more, and have different, better materials in terms of, you know, management.
These paving projects within the parking lots of schools have been kind of kicked down the road a little bit, too, and they've been put off. And we've looked for opportunities to roll them into bigger projects, so that if, you know, there's a street being done in town, if we can grab on the end of one of those projects to do it then, it's been the way that the cities try to tackle them. But, yeah, definitely, I hear what you're saying.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you both. Other comments about those?
So I think the request from the superintendent was just to have a vote that you've reviewed these requests, and that the committee's okay with the school department submitting these requests to the capital improvement process. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you. Next, we have a vote for a transfer from the out-of-district-to-personnel account, and I believe Pam Plummer's here. Speak to that, speak to that. Thank you.
I'm actually pretty darn hopeful tonight, being able to present this to you. It's an example of when problem-solving needs to happen pretty quickly to support students, that dovetails really nicely with conversations that are already happening at a school about things that people are looking at, about alternative programming. I'm always really careful when I present information about transfers from out-of-district tuition lines to positions within the district, to be thoughtful about the privacy of students, because actually, while it's a large amount of money, it is a very small number of students that I'm actually, where the funds are being relocated from. In this particular case, we have a few students who have pretty actively advocated with me to start thinking differently, just about how their education looks. Some of their out-of-district placements have not been the right match for them, and some of them have experienced the feeling that they've sort of reached the end of their road with continuing to be placed in private day placements like they've been placed in. And some of them are close to graduation, some of them are not. And so we're really trying to figure out how to help them, one, not drop out, and, two, develop some programming that will not just support these students, but also support some other students, hopefully, before we would lose them to out-of-district placements, by being able to provide the services in district. So the first, we have some tuition funds that are available for students who have stopped attending. Just to give you a quick example, we have had students who have really struggled with their placement, but who have continued to attend while we're brainstorming, who are super clear that they don't want to keep going, but until we figure out what to do next, we are maintaining their placements to the tune of going to school two days for an entire month, and paying a tuition of $6,500 for that month, for a student who have attended two days. So that's the type of money we're talking about, and the part that's exciting to me is that the students are so willing to have really active conversations about what, what would be meaningful for them to engage in, and how that matches up with the amazing brainstorming that we've done with folks at that high school. I'm really glad to have Ms. Melvezzi and Mr. Messing here tonight. We've had some really great conversations, and we're feeling pretty positive that the proposal we're putting forward would be very, very helpful for our students that are currently at North Hampton High, as well as the students who are returning in some way or other to access these services. access these services. So, one of the things is a lot of the students, when they're out of these, at these out-of-district placements, while the overall model might not be working very well for them largely because of the social challenges in being in a placement with lots of kids with challenges like theirs and the social dynamics of that and how that spills into social media, it's just, it's a hard dynamic to manage for some of our students. One of the things that tends to go well at those schools, though, is access to pretty quick clinical support. If they're having a hard day, they need a chance to regroup back to class. Our current, the two adjustment counselors at the high school who are working with our students right now, between the two of them have over 80 students with IEPs, which is a lot, especially when you consider that by the time you're at the high school level, really, your opportunities for grouping students, there certainly are opportunities for grouping students for some counseling activities, but largely, a lot of the students are really ready to spend that 30 minutes a week having pretty private, intense, individualized conversation with their counselor. So, it's not like you could just have a group of five and a group of four. Our counselors spend a lot of time doing really good work with our students, but they are not available sort of at a moment's notice if a student just needs somebody to talk with really quickly, or if they do make themselves available at the expense of cutting short something that was possibly really important to try to not cut short. So, that was one area where we feel like it would be really important to increase a position at the high school, an adjustment counselor position. The next one is exciting because it dovetails with our Twilight Academy program that we have a couple of students engaged in right now who are participating in gaining credits in order to graduate, but aren't necessarily interested in participating during the school day with everybody, all the other student population there. The piece that I have students who are willing, who are hoping to start accessing this type of support, the piece that's missing is we don't have a licensed special educator attached to that program. So, we're really hoping that if we attached a licensed special educator to that program, a halftime person who could come in towards the end of the day and stay after school, students who are either in an in-between phase in programming, or those who are coming up with some creative solutions, including a combination of internships, work-study, online coursework, and tutoring, there's a special education teacher available. We're thinking it would be a pretty small number of students to start with, and one of the key things that the people, that person would be responsible for is monitoring any online coursework that's happening and helping determine if additional tutoring is necessary, how students are progressing, and really kind of case managing along with other folks at the high school. But, it's hard to keep up with because it's different. It's just different than what we tend to do day-to-day in our four-block day. And then, the last one has been just a real challenge. We have a couple of students who participate in programming in our 18 to 22 range that require like a day a week of support, or even a two-hour period a week of support. And we have been struggling every week to find somebody to fill these very short blocks of time positions, to the point where it's really affecting the students. We have exhausted our sub-line. We have contacted so many different people to try to figure out somebody available at this particular time. At the same time, we've started recognizing that the needs are spread out enough that we're much more likely to be able to support the students, those short periods a day, periods a week, including the one, like the one day a week, the Thursday that we need. If we were to have somebody, a paraprofessional full-time, that sort of is filling the need of those students in transitional services without having to take them from someplace else, we just haven't even been able to do that using subs. So, to have somebody who's connected to our transition program in that way would be really helpful. The other piece that recently happened is we had the PVTA come in and train, I think it was almost a dozen people, right, to become trainers in the PVTA because there's such a waitlist at the PVTA for travel training that they made a number of our faculty and staff travel trainers at the high school, and so this person would also be really heavily involved in travel training with our transition-related students. So, that's a lot.
Okay. So, the, so, just to summarize, though, to try to address all of those issues, you're seeking this transfer from the out-of-district account to bring it in district to hire this person to provide these supports that students need?
Yep. An adjustment counselor, a paraprofessional, and a halftime special education teacher.
Are there questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Plummer. That was very helpful. So, do you have a big picture in mind that in the future, we'll have these positions? Right now, they're funded by specific kids that are coming back to the district, but do you have a big picture in mind that students in the future might make, might, and their families might make a decision to come back to Northampton schools as a result of the additional resources we have?
Yeah, 100%. And I think if you've, it's painful to sit through some of these program, meetings with students who, you know, you've exhausted your resources, and what are we gonna do? And we don't want you to drop out, and wow, you're this close to finishing, and it's really, really hard. And I've had conversations with some of our private day placements, too, about how, so, what happens when we have a student that we're paying $70,000 a year, but they're missing 65 days of school? That's, we can't continue. Something's not working in that particular situation, and I wish I could say it was few and far between, but it is not. So, I think by allowing more non-traditional ways of accessing both content, you know, curricular content that is going to allow students to progress and get their diploma and have successful careers or go to college, like, we've got to be able to do that at the same time while we're providing an emotionally supportive environment for the students to actually be able to do that. So, it's, I really believe, I could even imagine that other local districts will start sending students, honestly.
And I really appreciate your attitude on this and your thoughtfulness of it, and it really sounds like a win-win, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you. I agree with what Mr. Kaufman said in terms of just the thoughtfulness and what it can do, but I also have a concern, and it's not to say in any way that I'm against this, it's just a concern because we heard from parents in elementary schools this morning, earlier this evening, and I've heard from other ones over the past week or two, and I'm really concerned about the needs of implementing the wins model across all four elementary schools. As a school committee member sitting here, I don't have a clear picture of what those needs are for the younger kids, but I do sense it's a lot of kids, and there's a lot of kids that need maybe another special ed teacher available at a certain grade at a certain school. And I guess I'm sitting here wishing we had more money because I want to do all these things, and I don't even know if this money that's coming back in from out-of-district placements, maybe there's some more that could be used for those other needs, maybe there's not. But, as I sit here, I wonder if we could get more information of the needs of the entire district in terms of all the kids that are struggling at different age groups with different things, and then somehow prioritize where the, like, kind of what we did with the capital improvements, where's the very highest priority? And that doesn't take away from anything from this amazing proposal and the thoughtfulness, but I know that we don't have enough money to do everything we need to do, and I feel I need more information about the other needs in this area, too. Right. So, what I...
Dr. Provost just wanted to...
So, as Dr. Plummer explained this, this really has to happen as a package because you need the supports at the high school in order to be able to bring the students to the high school. So, I think this, this transfer has to be sort of considered as a system within itself. However, I will just mention to the committee that we became aware, and I should say that this is a strategy that we have used, I would say, just about every year we've been here. I think much of the new program that we've been able, much of the program we've been able to fund has been based on taking students from out-of-district placement back to the district. So, just a few hours ago, we became aware of another opportunity that may allow us to do something similar at the elementary school we were hearing from earlier this evening. It's a little bit, little bit early to get into detail about that, but I think that we may be able to do something to address some of those concerns that we heard earlier tonight with a different transfer.
Yep, which would come at a later date, but I do think that's an important factor. Yeah, in this particular case, really, the very small number of students that we're looking to support, it's actually like a pretty even amount of transfer when you consider the three positions and the, some of the additional tutoring that we're doing right now to support the students while we're trying to figure out these placements. But, yeah, I mean, really, the alternative for them is, there is no real alternative. I mean, it's to provide another private day placement because that's what we've said we do, and we have a school for you to go to regardless of if you're getting on that van any, every day. That also costs us $20,000, you know, for the year that keeps showing up every morning despite the student not getting on. So, it's really, yeah, for them, it's either, it's that or dropping out at this point, so...
Do you have any follow-up or...
Go ahead. I think I do, but go ahead.
I'm just curious how much money we're talking about. Did I miss?
So, we can estimate. I think we tend to do estimates. We often use like 55, 50 to 55 for a unit A position, or 20 for a paraprofessional position, and then, you know, 20 to 25 for a halftime special ed teaching position.
And so, will this equal out with the bringing them back from the out-of...
It's pretty close. Yeah, and like, I think we're also doing tutoring, too. So, and that's the unknown at this point about the tutoring. So, and there are also some other moving parts at the high school. So, some of these students' stories are kind of complicated, and I would say that there's probably about 20,000 left to, between tutoring and figuring out if we might need to use some of those funds for something else that we haven't quite figured out yet for these particular students.
I would just add to that by saying, but it's really hard to say. When Dr. Plummer says it's pretty close, that's about as good as we can do because this is a calculation that changes every day. Every day, there's another day of tuition. So, that figure changes as farther we get along, and also, we don't know who will be hiring for the position, so we don't know the salary, so that's another big unknown. But, using sort of our ballpark figures for this, the math works.
And I know in some cases, we've actually saved money in bringing students back, and so, but that's not your sense with...
I think with money, by being able to provide services for students who, if we didn't have this, we'd then be having to send them to out-of-district placements. Yeah, that's the big savings. There could be some savings. It's unclear, and, you know, just yesterday, I learned of another student who may want to drop out. So, in theory, that's another $70,000. However, I still have to go to these team meetings and advocate for what's right, and what's right could be a wide variety of things. It might not necessarily mean adding another position to the high school because this student will access the same type of programming. It's just really, like, every day I go to work, I'm like, whoa, okay, let's figure this one out. But, this feels really safe. This proposal feels like it's a safe plan. It's a plan that we know could benefit a lot of kids at the high school, and also, I, we have, we have an understanding and a willingness from the students who are coming back to engage in this model that doesn't exist really around any other form of programming right now, so...
And then, just a small question. I don't know what a PVTA travel trainer is.
Sure. It's to help students access the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority buses, independently training them how you look up bus routes, how you find out where the bus routes are. There's actually a whole other component for accessibility that some of our students will be able to call and schedule a van pickup because of their status as having a disability. It's really an important factor for some of our kids to get around the valley. We're lucky to have a bus system like that, so it's great, but there's a huge waitlist, so...
So, I think I just need a clarification because after listening to Dr. Provost, so when I read this, I thought these students are already at Northampton High School and we're looking for ways to better support them, but it sounds like maybe this is a mix, and we need this in order to support ones that might come, and...
Or that are coming with...
Yeah, okay. So, that I didn't fully appreciate.
Got a couple of kids on right now that are...
I mean, really, it's really just with this hat on of, I know we're not doing enough for a whole range. It's not that I don't want to support what this little group needs, but just to ask you, are there going to, and Dr. Provost, I'm probably asking you this, too, are there ways that we can assure with our limited budget over the next few months that we can support the wins model in the way that we need to? And I'm not in the elementary school classrooms. I don't know what that means. I don't know what kinds of support we need. How worried are we about finding money for that? And if we are, which I suspect we are, is there a way to, should we be scaling this down just a little to make sure that we spread our money around, or is this, you know, the minimum of what these high school students need? I don't know how to judge if this is, you know, the Rolls-Royce or the really minimum.
It's the minimum.
Okay.
But, it's the minimum I think is reasonable.
Yeah.
And actually could have a pretty significant impact because, you know, even the, like I said, some of those tuitions are in the 70,000, the 80,000. It's a lot of money. The alternative is a lot of money. And/or the students dropping out, which I'm also not really, it's just, it can't happen. So, I have to find some way to support these students, and this is an expensive way, but it was more expensive the way that what, prior. Can I say something?
Ms. Malvezi?
Sorry.
Go ahead, please. No, please, go ahead. Just welcoming you to the podium.
Ms. Malvezi, I was your principal at the high school, and I feel like I'm in, almost in an impossible situation tonight. I also have a son in the second grade at Leeds Elementary, and I would guess that he is one of the students who was earlier described as being two or three students, which is also hard to hear and hard to say, but I think that is probably the case. And I feel like I, he has a great team, and I think the people at Leeds are doing the very best that they can. Could everybody use more resources? Yes. I think it's probably a matter of how the resources are being used, and that's, you know, at the high school, we struggle with the same thing. But, I have to say that at the high school level, we were actually a day late and a dollar short of having the money. We've already taken in a few of the students from out-of-district placements without the supports in place, and, you know, when we talk about caseloads, we already have really high caseloads for our adjustment counselors. What they can't manage is seeping into the guidance counselors, which is, and it's just a trickle-down effect that, you know, that has a large impact on the overall success of the students. And, you know, we want to have students come back to the high school. We welcome them, but we really can't service them and the other students that we have. And so, I think looking at different alternatives is a benefit to all of our students, but the reality is, is that the students who already are in the high school, who have recently joined us, are taking up an inordinate amount of time from our service providers, our counselors, and it's not sustainable.
I was just gonna make a motion to, to transfer from the out-of-district-to-personnel accounts.
Second.
Just to get the motion on the table, okay. Any other questions or discussions about that? So, it sounds like, Dr. Provost, you may be coming, at our next meeting, might get an update on the other situation that we were discussing or hearing about.
So, since you're directing that to me, I guess I, I would just also like to answer your question by saying, so there you heard two schools, one implementing a wins model, one's implementing a completely different model. What we're really dealing with is what I've been calling the high needs future. When I present the MCAS scores in a couple of weeks, you'll see that all of our peer districts have changed, all of our peer schools have changed, and that has to do with the change of our student population. And the school right now that's experiencing the quickest change in the student population is Leeds. So, I think that is one of the things that's driving it. But, it's everywhere. The population at the high school is changing. Kids are presenting us with more difficult needs. I will say this to the teachers, to the administrators, to everybody, ESPs, they're doing tremendous work meeting those needs, but every year... But every year, I bring a budget and it's always a matter of trying to pull funds from this place and this place and this place to build the best thing I can for that moment. And then it changes. There was a tremendous amount of population change over the summer in the district. Students ended up at different places than we thought they were going to be. One of the pressures that that Leeds is dealing with right now has to do with some students who are displaced by disasters in other communities. So that is all kind of hard to project in a budget, but that's why a budget is a guess and why the work has to always be ongoing of trying to make shifts and adjustments as you go to meet the needs that present, which may be different than the needs that you anticipated when you were building the budget.
So there may be, so you may be coming forward to us with some updates on that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So there's been a motion made and seconded to approve these transfers from out of district to personnel account. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. Next, we have a vote, a requested vote to accept some donated IMAX from Smith College. And Ms. McLaughlin is here to speak about those.
Yeah, hi. Smith has been overly generous with us over the years in donating equipment that they feel would benefit our schools. And one of the areas that they have often been helpful with is supplying that the Mac computers that we have access to in our schools, and they offered to donate some additional ones. And so I'm here asking that we accept that donation. Those are things that we use, again, as we continue to educate our students in a variety of different platforms. That is one.
Make a motion to accept the donation of Smith College IMAX.
Second.
Any discussion? Three computers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and Ms. McLaughlin, please stay there because you have the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of a job description for the IT pathways coordinator.
It's actually an IT, it's taking this idea of at the high school, taking the idea of having this IT pathway that we have had in process, along with the idea of implementing and incorporating this internship work studies career focus piece and putting it all under one umbrella. And so the way it currently is designed is there's a there's a position that covers a lot of the career readiness training and a lot of the internship coordination and all of the stuff that goes into that, work studies and whatnot at the schools. And then we had the IT pathway coordinator position. And what this position is, is basically taking those two and having it so there's one solid person that is the point person for all of that work that's happening at the high school. And so one of the things that this would offer and allow us to do is it would take what is already, as we've seen over time, or you may not notice that, but I noticed on my spreadsheet, the numbers of students doing the IT pathways, as well as just the increased number of students doing internships at the high school. It gives them a point person. It gives them the opportunity to also have that person be present over the summer, which is huge for the Innovation Pathway Program because a lot of the primary internship experiences happen over the summer as well. And it allows that person also to utilize that time to continue fostering relationships with other business and community members to continue allowing our students the opportunity to have those experiences.
So would you make a motion to just?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I make a motion to put the description on the floor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There is, I don't know if this is for you. At the high school, students can do work, study and internships that are not in the IT pathway. And there is somebody who helps coordinate that.
So just to clarify what Molly said at the beginning, we had a halftime position in the IT pathway that we needed to fill. That the halftime internship coordinator from the high school applied for. And so we, there's obviously a overlap in skills needed for the two positions. So this idea is just to combine the halftime coordinator at the high school with the halftime coordinator from the IT pathway.
Okay, so my follow-up then is that this person is still facilitating work, studies and internships in other fields that all the students want to do, not necessarily IT?
Yes, that's the other half of the position.
That's the other, right? Okay.
And just to clarify, we've already funded both of these halftime positions, so would it be true to say by bringing them together, if anything, we save a little money or, I mean, don't need benefits?
Potentially, there'd be a benefit saved.
So it's not costing us anything and potentially it's saving us something. Is that okay?
My other, just the same pitch I made, I think, with the other job description for the transition coordinator position. You know, it seems to me likewise that there's a certain amount of overlap in terms of the, you know, the outreach to various sort of opportunities within the community for both transition coordinator position and for this position. And I just could, I don't think it has to be in the job description, but encourage encourage those two people to work together.
So while you're here, I mean, I'm curious, so somebody has been doing the internship program coordinator and they applied for the Innovation Pathway. Is that really a 50% job, the internship program coordinator, or is this, or is it bigger than that?
They are overlapping, so the way the way that the internship or the IT pathway coordination hours were allocated is a higher number than right now the work and internship hours are allocated. Does that answer that for you?
I guess what I was wanting to make sure was that we're not going to lose out on a 50, if the person doing internship program coordination is doing more work than a 50% time, I don't want to, I think it's following up on what Ms. Burnham was saying, we don't want to lose work that's already happening. I'm assuming that it's.
Sure. Part of the reason that we look to combine these is because there's a lot of overlap in building relationships. Even right now, the internship coordinator has been able to make connections with companies in IT, but also in other areas. And it's this idea of, you know, we were at a meeting today where one of our students from Innovation Pathway was speaking to a lot of leaders in the community. And Secretary Pizer said, hey, you know what? We would love to have that, he would like as a vision to have 50% of our students in some form of an internship or a pathway. I don't know, Dr. Provost, if you remember his timeline, but that's his goal. And so the idea being is this person who is currently doing the work that is building these rapport, this rapport and relationships with companies, whether it be specifically in IT, but also understanding the way that this idea of exposure to careers, work-based learning readiness and all of that, it goes both for IT students in the IT pathway, but it also goes for other students. So the partnerships and the relationship and the skills really inevitably are to go out to all students. And so there's an overlap in that that skill set. And I think, as you had referenced, is having like multiple, multiple people makes it more and more complicated. We're not necessarily complicated, but if there's similar work, communicating and working together makes great sense. And so in this position, it's saying, taking this person who, yes, does a lot of coordination for the IT pathway, but also joins in with this other, I think it's more or less saying it's just going to offer and open up more opportunities than restrict.
And I think ideally, I like the idea of combining them for the reasons we've said, but I just want to put out there, it's important to make sure that it doesn't turn into all Innovation Pathway, right? That we maintain some commitment to a broader range of internships because that don't involve technology at all. And you just wouldn't want to combine them and make.
So there's a couple of things I would say. That also, we're also extending that individual's time, so by allowing that work over the summer, that also gives that. And, you know, while I am a representative of IT, you know, my background is in many different things and I do feel passionately about the idea of saying, you know, I sat with a student the other day who was advocating to look into some different careers. Even within the pathway, one of my students looked at different careers. And the idea is not is not for me to say, you need to go into IT because I went into IT. The idea is to say, hey, here's an opportunity to see what's out there. And so really, this position, it's, the intent is not to have it be solely one track, like, oh, aren't I lucky, I have a, you know, full-time only IT. The idea is really to have a point person for students to go to. With right now, because we have this particular pathway, yes, there's a lens in getting that underway, but because we see those skills as often, you know, overlapping, the intent is not to have it be solely, this is only the person you go to for IT, which I think is what you're saying is your concern. And I'm saying, it's important and we as as both the administrative staff at the high school, as well as, I think, the entire group that's been working really hard at the high school to get these experiences available to students, the intent is to continue allowing that to happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One more question. I'm sorry. There is talk of other pathways. So does that expand sort of?
So I have said in many different settings that I'd like to see another pathway at the high school. If obviously we are able to be successful with that, we would need to staff up for that.
Okay.
But I think at this point, the position is appropriate to cover the IT pathway and the internships we're doing. I could say there's another way this could grow as well, which is we've also had conversations about our 18 to 22-year-old population needing more workplace learning opportunities. So that could cause it to grow as well.
I want to clarify one thing. Are either of these current 50% positions grant funded or are they in our budget? Where does the funding come for both of these?
The portion of this position that's paid for from the IT pathway is partially grant-funded and partially funded from the appropriation.
And how about the internship program?
That's completely from the appropriation.
Okay.
So we've had a motion made and seconded to approve this new job description. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have a request from the superintendent seeking a vote authorizing him to negotiate a MOU for a math interventionist chair. Dr. Provost?
So this may seem familiar to you because last year, NACE had requested a that we use the funding that was in the budget for the PE, the high school PE chair, to fund a reading chair for the elementary school. As they presented the the proposal, they said, no one's taking this position, it's in the budget, and we do have reading specialists working at the elementary school trying to provide interventions. It would be helpful if they attended the chair meetings so that they could they could coordinate their efforts with the classroom teachers and others. Last year, you allowed that to happen and we did use the money that was in the budget for the PE chair to fund the reading specialist. And when the contract was renegotiated, we embedded the reading chair in the in the contract and it's part of the budget. So the PE position is still unfilled and the NACES asked me, what about a math chair? We have math interventionists as well. They don't have a chair position. And so I think to be consistent with my former position, that if it's in the budget and we want to have a chair, but the chair is is not coming forward in PE, we could use the money for an educative purpose by approving the use of it for a math chair. So that would be, that would be my request.
Ms. Fallon.
Can I just ask, so if you were to do that though, and then at some point you decided you wanted it to be used, there wasn't just to be used, it would still be?
I would propose a one-year non-renewing agreement, much as we did with the reading chair. And how much is the money? The chair position, I think, is somewhere around $2,300.
I would, oh, sorry. I just want to ask you again, it's, should we be careful right now and maybe consider postponing spending money on new things in light of what I think is some pretty big need at the elementary schools?
We could defer this till next month. As I said, there might be more information forthcoming next month if you want to keep this on the table to possibly use for that. I don't think that would be a problem.
We just have to be mindful that we have a collective bargaining agreement that says we're going to pay this $2,300, so.
For a PE.
For a PE chair, so.
Right, so if a PE chair was to apply, then I think we'd have to use the money for that position.
We'd have to come up with it. So I just want to be mindful, we don't just say we're going to reallocate that $2,300. We're saying we're going to do it for one year at their request, but we still have to, we still have a signed contract that says we have to pay that $2,300.
And it is at their request.
It is.
That is correct.
Yeah. So, okay.
Could I move to put this on the table?
You can put it on the table, sure. Just make a motion in favor.
I make a motion in favor of it.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. So, so your question?
Can I offer an amendment to postpone it till we get more information on the needs at the elementary schools?
Okay.
That's an amendment.
Well, I would just say, you just, you'd want to make a motion to postpone consideration of this, which would then override the the motion. Okay.
Sure, I'll make a motion to postpone.
Okay, so that needs a second. Is there a second? Postpone consideration? Lacking a second, it comes back to the main motion and the second. All those in favor of authorizing the superintendent to negotiate this MOU, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Next, we have a report from Dr. Provost on his feedback that he collected at the open houses manning the late start table.
That's correct. Last spring, we began discussing a late start model in which all start and end times would shift 30 minutes later in the day. Thinking that this would have the greatest potential negative consequences for elementary parents, I reached out to the elementary school councils to assist with communication to the elementary parents and gathering opinion. This resulted in a survey showing parent support outweighing opposition at the elementary level by about two to one. When I presented the information, you asked me to attend the fall open houses to try to speak to the 33% who were opposed to find out more about the reasons for their opposition. So tonight, I have to report that my mission was only partially accomplished. I did table at all four elementary schools and the middle schools, but I can't say that I learned much about the third of parents who may be opposed to the plan because most of the people I spoke to were actually very supportive of the plan. I had 42 individual conversations over the course of five evenings. Thirty-eight of those conversations were elementary parents who supported the change. Of the four who were opposed, three were parents who felt that a later start would interfere with their work schedules. One of these suggested a better option would be to flip the middle and high school tiers and make no change to the elementary start time. The fourth individual I spoke to, who was in opposition, was an eighth grader who was looking forward to getting out of high school at 2:00 and doesn't want to have to stay later in the day. So many of those who supported the plan, I should note, asked why we didn't just switch the elementary and the high school tiers. And with all of them, I shared my opinion that that is actually more consistent with the research and would probably be a better option, except for the fact that when it was studied in the past, we learned that many of our families depend upon older children to watch their younger siblings. So that's why that was considered an unacceptable option in the past. Once I explained this, everyone who asked the question was supportive of moving everyone back by 30 minutes. There were some interesting comments. Some parents pointed out that they would need to pay more for before-school care, but would save an equal amount in after-school care, so it would wash out for them. Others pointed out that it would be a difficult adjustment, no matter what, but they still felt they supported it because their children would benefit when they reached high school. One parent made a strange, or I shouldn't say strange, one parent made a unique comment that having a longer before-school activity would actually provide a better value for their childcare dollar because they felt like the wide before-school childcare was kind of a rip-off at this point because they're really only watching the kids for about 15 minutes. And so getting a solid 45 minutes might actually be a better value. So there were trade-offs involved for parents who were in support and the parents who came to speak to me at the open houses, I think, felt that the trade-offs were acceptable and worthwhile. I would point out that one of the people that I spoke to about sort of this split with the majority being in favor of the change and a minority being in opposition to the change, felt that it was very similar to the splits that had come in all the rest of the late Is there a group that we're willing to disappoint in order to obtain a late start? Although I would say that we're not there yet. As Ms. Ballencourt pointed out when she last spoke to the school committee on the issue, we have yet to hear from the students. I would also add to that, that we've yet to hear from the employees. The leadership of NACE, we have heard from, who has said that this definitely would have to be a subject of negotiations if it was to move forward, so put that out there. So I guess I'm here to get some more direction from you and to advise that if you'd like me to continue this exploration, I think the next steps should be to get some input from other stakeholder groups, specifically high school students, who this is all being done in support of, and who we have heard from some students who said maybe they don't want this to happen. We also learned last year that knowing the high school start time is very important for students planning to take Smith College courses. So the decision doesn't need to be made immediately, but it should be made soon enough to allow for the necessary planning for next year. So that's really what I got out of the open houses, and I guess I'm just looking for your direction now on how you'd like me to proceed.
Eleanor, you seem to perk up.
Having to wake up at 6:30 is always something that we, high schoolers, would look forward to, I think. I think generally, it's, at least throughout my high school career and me being in this district, later start times have been kind of a hot topic, I guess. And I'm interested to hear that you're actually thinking about a plan to change that. So at least from what I've heard and what I've experienced, I'm sure I think the majority of students would be in support of changing the start times, although you do make a good point about Smith College classes and how it kind of lines up really well right now with our classes and their classes. And I think another concern is after-school sports and having to stay either like really late in the day to do those if we did end up moving the school start time back. Yeah, I think that's probably one of the main concerns for most students is just, or two of the main concerns would be the Smith College classes and sports, especially for students who don't have time to go home in between the school day and the sports that they play after school. You know, sometimes some practices, just because of like space availability or, you know, coach availability, they don't start until 6:00 p.m. or later. And for students to have to wait from, you know, 2:30 to 6:00 for those sports practices, I think may be a long time. So yeah, those I think would be...
What do you think the best way to poll the student body will be? Just, I mean, is that something?
Survey.
The Student Union could do?
Yeah. I think the Student Union would be very willing to survey the students if that's something that you think would be possible.
That's what the committee wants. I'm asking the committee if they want me to keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, so just to add to that, I think years ago, it was actually hard to poll the students, and there was all sorts of stories of double ballots and all this, but now you all are very good at doing this online, right?
Yeah.
And we've seen all sorts of polls that the Student Union has done over the last few years, and I would heavily support hearing, you know, how the students would vote on that if other people go along with that. I personally think that's really important. And Dr. Provost, I thought we were going to ask the school councils to weigh in, and, you know, especially at the high school, I don't know if that's a method we want to use or not. I'm more interested in what the students say through the poll, but I am also interested in what the teachers have to say. And I think just a couple of things, I think for teachers' planning, they need to know early enough too, because a lot of them have childcare responsibilities that probably have to get committed to before Smith College classes have to get committed to. And the final thing with the Smith College classes, the schedules changed dramatically this year, and there's a lot of different start and finish times, and I think it is working well with the current high school schedule, but what is the new block called? I don't remember the...
Flex block.
Flex block. Once you know what time the high school is going to start, and if somebody looks, and I'm happy to assist, at the Smith College, very complicated new schedule, and if you are willing to put that flex block in, in a way to accommodate that start time and the flex block, because it's going to change with the flex block anyway, I think you can probably figure it out.
Yes.
On the flex block, is that going to be put in place next year? Is that definitive?
Yes. Yes.
One of the things that I feel I would really appreciate in any kind of survey or presentation are all of the factors that affect people, because we anecdotally talk about who has a job and who takes classes at Smith. And I feel like when we make these choices, you know, we're weighing things out, and I would really like to know what are the groups that we are weighing, who is taking a burden of this? Like, I mean, we know that there's, okay, we know that educationally it's stronger for students, like, okay, but we know that there are also all these reasons that it hasn't happened.
So what I hear you saying is that you're proposing a two-level survey. One is, are you in favor of a half-an-hour-later start time? If so, why? What are the reasons? And are you opposed? If so, why? What are the reasons?
Or even, what are some things that you think about that would make this difficult for students? I mean, I think that students also want to take care of one another, and that they would just, you know, they also are taking, gathering information. I mean, I feel like it's that collecting, it's a whole bunch of data points that I don't, I can anecdotally imagine things, but that's not research. So you're, you know, I also feel like the principals and the alt team and the teachers know a lot of this, and the students know a lot of, you know, and to pull together so that we just have a list of like, what are the risks, what are the things that people are, how can we acknowledge the things that people are letting go of to make this happen?
Do you have more comment?
So just to clarify, I should, the survey would include, you know, what would you be sacrificing? Are there any issues that would, you know, come with this change? Right? Okay. Yeah.
Ms. Busansky?
I think it's great if the Student Union did a survey. I really support that, and we've gotten a lot of really great information from past surveys, and I think that the Student Union has worked with maybe different teachers, maybe the statistics teacher, et cetera, on how to actually develop a survey that's not biased. I understand your point, I recognize it, but I think asking the question, what are you sacrificing, or what would be difficult, would really bias all the results.
And it's more that I just want to know.
And I understand what you're trying to do.
I'm not saying that that needs to be in the, I don't, sorry, I'm interrupting you. I apologize.
But I understand your point. I mean, I think it's a good point you're making, I just don't think that's the way you'd want to go about it in, you know, developing a survey. Lots of kids might not feel like they're, or might not be sacrificing anything. So I think that's, and that's part of why we're talking about pushing all three schools' levels a half-an-hour, so that kids who do have to pick up younger siblings aren't going to be, families won't be sacrificing anyway. So there's, there is a little bit of that already embedded in how we've done that. So I would just really urge you to, you know, try and come up with a, you know, as much of an unbiased survey as you can, so we can get at the real information that we want to get at. Though I understand your point.
Okay. So thank you for that report, and you'll keep us posted.
Well, I don't actually know if you want me to keep going or not.
Yes.
If you want, then keep going.
Yes, keep going.
All right.
Keep going.
I will keep you posted.
Can I ask one more question? So I am curious, because Dr. Boss had put out an idea, I didn't know if we were going to look at it at all or not, about not changing the start time, I guess, at the, I can't, you could probably say it better, Dr. Boss, but not changing it at the middle and high school with that, or changing the middle and high school so that they're both start at the same time. Just briefly, the idea is to leave the middle school and the elementary schools as they are, and see if the high school will fit in the middle. And we have a meeting on the books with the busing coordinator to understand that better, and it's next week.
Okay. So we'll have more information on that as well. We're sort of pushing ahead on that as well. Is that accurate? Okay. Thank you. Great.
Okay, so do you feel?
I do. Thank you.
Excellent. So next, we have a report from Ms. Fallon. This is the required report that needs to be happening from the Collaborative for Educational Services.
Thanks. So you all should have received the executive director's report from the DCEL, and what that law actually requires is that I just report from the meeting. And so rather than go over what you've already read, I just wanted to share with you something that we did discuss in depth at the meeting, our last meeting, and that I thought was really interesting, and the conversation, let's continue with the committee. I don't know if all of you have read Commissioner Jeff Riley's Our Way Forward. It's his report that he released in late June, kind of summarizing his findings after his first year on the job. And it was great that we were, I feel like it was the first time I was, we were part of the whole process. I know a lot of us were there when he first came on the job and met us at the Delaney House and sort of held that stakeholders' listening session. And then many of us, I know Dr. Provost and I were both able to attend his conference at UMass, kind of reimagining, it was setting the blueprint for the 21st century and kind of reimagining what education in Massachusetts would look like. And he's, you know, been to a lot of, he came and visited our school and has been to talk with the MASC. And so at the end of all that, he came out with this report and really identified the direction. It's available on the DESI website, and I won't go into depth about it, but he essentially identified the key points in this Kaleidoscope Collective Learning Program pilot that he's going to be starting this year to focus on deeper learning. But a lot of the items that he sort of highlighted as being most important for this, you know, this coming century, I thought was really interesting, were things that, in large part due to the leadership of Dr. Provost, and like you just heard Molly McLaughlin talking about the IT pathways, that we're actually already doing a lot of this in our district, which I think is great. A lot of what he highlights in his report are things like early college programs, dual enrollment, the innovation pathways, home visit programs, internships. We're really kind of ahead of the game with paradigm shift. And so all of these community partnerships, like the one we have with the Five College Consortium, and the paradigm shift, and working with the Collaborative for Educational Services, are really important, and that's exactly the direction that they hope to see us going. But the conversation that also happened within the collaborative was, how can they best support us, and where do we see those needs arising? And I feel like, you know, that's the conversation we haven't had as a community, and it's going to be time to sit down and talk about the new district improvement plan. And so I would love it if we could make time at some point, you know, in the new year to read this report and sort of talk about, how are we preparing students for the 21st century? You know, there are jobs that we should be preparing them for that actually don't even exist yet. There are changes in the curriculum that are probably going to be suggested. I know there's a big push for, you know, pushing more towards analytical and applied mathematics and statistics and probability versus the old standards of geometry and trigonometry, and a focus on more learning to learn and other skills. So I, I think that these are conversations that, they're interesting, and I think that they're important for us to have when we think about what's coming down the path and the direction that it's clear that the new commissioner wants to take us. And I'd rather be part of the, part of leading this than reacting to mandates as they're handed down after decisions have already been made. So anyway, that was my report. I would love to talk about with anybody. It's available on the DESI website, and we don't meet again until mid-November.
Thank you very much for that report. Any questions about the collaborative? Yes, Ms. Busansky?
So I think it'd be a great idea to put it on a future agenda for us to all read and discuss. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I didn't know what format, whether it would be as a retreat.
Or a retreat? It could be a retreat topic.
Yeah, I feel like it's a retreat, maybe, as part of goal-setting or...
You know, it's trying to, when we think about the future, you know, kind of have in mind where, what direction the state leadership is actually hoping we go.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay. All right. Cool. I know we're going to be thinking about in the new year, some retreat materials, that could be one. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a comment real quick. First of all, thank you, Ms. Fallon, for sharing this. And so I'm looking on page five, and in, one of the gentlemen who works for CES, this says, "Has continued the facilitation of district-level strategic planning in the Belcher Town and Amherst Regional Schools. This work embraces a multi-year plan, including outcomes, objectives, initiatives, and action plans." And I just wanted to, if you weren't aware of this, Dr. Provost, or if you haven't, I don't know where you are yet with thinking about updating our district improvement plan, but it looks like CES offers somebody at least. I know there's a number of people, but that would be one opportunity I would just encourage you to consider.
Sure.
You have some feedback, obviously, from our two neighboring districts on how well that is done. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So do you want to now continue with the next item on the agenda, Ms. Fallon, which is the MASC resolutions?
Sure. So...
As our voting delegate.
Right. Yeah, so I, there are nine resolutions. I know you've all read them this year, and I think last year, too, a rationale was provided, which is really helpful. As you know, there's no way of knowing how these will be amended on the floor, so I think that the fastest and maybe best way of going about this is to just ask if there are any strong objections that you have to any of these that I should know about, or if there, if you have any very strong feelings about something that I need to, you know, fight particularly hard for. I'm assuming that most of you are generally supporting the resolutions, but I would certainly take any direction that you have to offer. And I would like to add that I was able to add, so the last resolution on charter school reform, as a member of the resolutions committee, when I got there, there were no resolutions that had been submitted, so I was able to submit that. I reworked one that had been submitted in 2015 to bring it up to date, and then was able to vote on it at the July Board of Directors meeting when I stood in for the chair. So that did make it in there. I don't know that it'll do any good, but I'd like to keep it in front of the legislature as a priority.
So are there any, any of these resolutions that anyone has a concern or wants to pull out, or are we generally supportive of them? Did you have, were there any that you have concerns about that you think we should be mindful of?
I had questions, and that I did ask about the licensure, the continuing to educate diversity and professional licensure, that I checked with Dr. Provost, and I did ask a few teachers about, and they assured me that it really had, that MTL had been identified as a barrier towards attracting a diverse workforce and for people coming in from other states. And I guess they offered me a different way of thinking about it, in that they weren't saying to get rid of licensure, they were saying there are alternative licensure processes that exist that would be less burdensome and difficult for equity of access and opportunity. And so, yeah, so I certainly support it now that I've gotten some clarification on it.
Okay.
And I had a question about the bus transportation one. You know, which would, how would that, does anybody know how that would work if we were to, would it be, would it be using PBTA buses, or would it be PBTA-operating yellow buses? If this...
It's the, yeah, so it would be using the PBTA buses. That's what, that's what the regional transportation is kind of initially came out as that, right?
Right, and that's what I was talking about, allowing, as opposed to just allowing them to be the bidder and them being the operator of yellow bus, you see what I'm saying?
I think that their intention was the, there was the federal triple legislation that prohibited yellow school buses from being in competition...
In competition, right.
...with the regional transportation. Oh, no, sorry, it was the opposite. It was the, the yellow school buses...
Being competed with.
Right. Were protected by it. And so I think that their hope was to eliminate that legislation and allow them to use regional transportation that was already in existence. And alter their routes, because that was another thing, wasn't it? That they wanted to alter their routes.
Okay. Anyway. Ms. Busansky?
Oh, sorry, you're done?
Primarily.
Mr. Moore? No, I think he's done. Okay. I just thought it was interesting that we had in our budget a line item for including menstrual products at the high school, and then we had, we took it out, and here we have resolution number eight, which is for access to menstrual supplies. And I just think it's interesting that we're going to be, again, right ahead of the curve. I know. And... now we're going to, you know, either we will do it first, or they will make us do it, but one way or another, we're on the same page. So it was sort of interesting to see that as one of the resolutions.
So, sounds like you're hearing that everyone's, there's no burning objections to any of them. So go forth and cast our vote for us.
And again, thank you, Laura.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having your trust in me.
That's coming up next. When is it?
November.
November, okay. Right after, yeah, okay, early November.
The Thursday.
Cape Cod. Okay. Next, we'll turn to Ms. Fallon for the report of the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. And I know you have, there's one vote, I think, on that list tonight, and it's just, it's actually just a vote to refer a policy to the Rules and Policy Committee.
Yeah. So last month, we had asked you to refer the question of the SRO having access to student data to us. And now, having met and discussed it at length, we realized that we would actually like you to refer the policy that would pertain to that issue to us so that we can bring that back to you. So we're asking for you to refer a policy, KLG Relations with Police Authorities, to us for review.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's been seconded? So again, there've been a motion made to basically for a policy to the Rules and Policies Subcommittee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Moving on to the first readings.
Yes, we have a group of policies that are first readings. We had talked about going through a little bit more systematically through the policies. And so the first group of policies are from Section A, and they required minimal changes. Policy AA, School District Legal Status. Just to kind of go through it, I hope you all have the highlighted yellow parts this time.
Yes.
So I did compare, we did compare our, our policy with the MASC policy. We realized that we were missing the words children who in our version. And so we're asking to add those in. And we are changing the wording slightly up the last paragraph to read the North Hampton schools are the part of the first Hampton. And those are the only changes that we will be recommending during the second reading next month. Can I go on?
Yes, please.
Okay. Policy AUB, the people in their school district is identical to the MASC policy. It was last updated in 2003. So I thought it was important that we all at least lay eyes on it as we go through this. And so we will be bringing that forward with no suggested changes. Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex was actually revised in August of 2015. So more recently than a lot of our policies. Once again, it is identical to the MASC recommended policy, and we are not recommending any changes. At this time.
Yes.
Sorry, where are we?
AE.
ACB.
AE.
ACB.
ACB. Oh.
If I'm going down their order, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, AE is the next one on the agenda.
Okay. Commitment to Accomplishment is identical to the MASC policy, was last revised or adopted in 2003. So we thought it was important to review it, and we will be bringing that forth for a second reading next month.
So no changes.
So no changes. And then finally, so Policy ACB is actually non-discrimination on the basis of transgender and gender non-conforming status. It is a policy that the MASC does not in fact have. They just have their nominative non-discrimination policy. But I think kind of like what Ms. Buscansky was saying earlier, like, I think this is an area which we're leading. And I know that Mr. Moore and I attended a conference, a seminar, a conference, professional development thing last weekend in Springfield that talked about LGBTQ students. And, you know, this was something that came up with, in that discussion. And I think that, in fact, a lot more districts will be moving towards having a policy such as this. And then I think it is important for us to spell this out in policy. Because it's such a new policy for us, it was, gosh, updated, we wrote it just two years ago.
We created it.
Yeah, just created it two years ago. And I know Karen Jarvis-Sance spent a lot of time on it. We are only recommending one small change on the third page. It's highlighted in yellow, that the responsibility for the district. For, for, it's not perfect.
What did we change it to? I didn't make a good note here.
Yeah. Responsibility for.
Basically.
Was determining the, of a student's preferred gender.
We, we changed it from.
Yeah, one small change on it. It was, yeah, it's determining that we didn't.
Yeah, it was, the problem was that it really is the individuals, they are the ones who determine their identity.
Yeah.
No one else.
District, yeah.
And so it really is about, you know, we, we struggled with the actual word. I think it was about whether it would be for claiming or asserting, or, you know, being, making sure that, that they are addressed by appropriate pronouns.
Responsibility for notifying the district of students' preferred.
Yeah, missing word.
The responsibility for notifying the district of a student's preferred gender identity rests with the student's gender or parent guardian in the case of young students. We realized upon reading it that determining was problematic. So that'll be the only recommended change. And we hope that despite the fact that the MASC does not have this policy, that we will in fact vote to maintain this. So that's it for first readings.
Yeah. So just, maybe I'm a little confused. The ones, there was a few here from 2003 that you said MASC has not updated. So does that, so has your team looked it over and decided that no updates are necessary, or that's your next step?
That first four that she just went through?
Yeah.
Yeah. The ones that we didn't propose any changes, we looked at them and proposed no change.
The next time.
But you're certainly welcome.
No, no, I was just wondering the process. So you looked at them, and so has MASC updated all their policies?
So they are constantly updating policies in the same way that we are. One of the things that they did, I was just pulling it up now to show you, look at it, was when they, when they redid their online reference manual, they removed the dates. And so when I, like, right now, I just pulled up their online policy manual. And so I don't know when the last time they updated theirs anymore. So we track when we last looked at it. And that's why I think it's important for us to actually go through systematically and read through our policies and to compare. So the only way I know when they've updated is when they send out, they'll send out those notifications saying, we have addressed these policies. And they'll say, like, please look at, it's like a legislative update or bulletin or a policy newsletter that they send out.
So let's say we look at AE, Commitment to Accomplishment, as an example. So you would go to, MASC, you would open it up.
So I'm opening it up. There's no date.
There's no date, but the language is the same.
It's identical.
As, as this one.
Yes.
In fact, we, we had a good discussion about that policy.
And it's just some of the language is so awkward.
We don't really have any, propose the change, you know. But that doesn't mean.
Yeah. And so I think part of our point in doing this is, I mean, we have so many policies. I think it's important to, even if we spend five minutes going through, to just at least lay eyes on them and to compare. If they're the same, if, if the committee feels strongly about changing some of them, that's certainly something we can do. But I think that we should at least be, you know, laying eyes on.
I totally agree. I just think, like, we have counted on MASC's leadership on this. This, this and the others you mentioned might be an example where they just haven't gotten to it. We don't know.
Right. Yeah.
They might update it in six months.
Exactly.
And we'll go, I wish we would have had this rather than.
Well, and we can't go back and do it. Yeah.
I just had a comment. When I, I wasn't part of the committee when the transgender and gender non-conforming status was written, but it's really well-written. And I read it. And I just want to thank you all who did it. I think it's such a model. And I don't know if this is normal, but I wonder if you want to submit it to MASC as saying, you know, we put this policy together. We're really proud of it. Maybe you want to consider adopting it and sharing it with other districts. I don't know if they do that, but it's really good.
Thank you. Yeah, I, we probably should share it with the presenter who's working, Dr. Dutch, who's working with other districts on creating this policy.
Yeah.
We should probably save him a little trouble. I would check with Dr., with Karen Jarvis-Sance first.
I would just note that I have shared this policy with several colleagues who are looking for a model. So I know that other districts are looking for something.
Yeah.
She will be missed.
Yes, she will.
We can still call her up, right?
Okay. So on to the second.
So now we're on to the three policies from, still remain from our Section D. We're so close to down to Section D, only two more to go. So we have, these are second meeting and votes. First, we have Policy DFH, Fundraising Events. That one, sorry, so many pages. That one, we had brought forth with no.
Yeah, I don't even have it here.
Changes. I think it just came late. But if someone would make a motion, I have an amendment. I don't know how it's.
Motion to approve Policy DFH.
Second.
And I'm just realizing, I don't know why this version doesn't have it, but I could have sworn that we made fundraising one word. Did we not?
Yes.
It is on this one.
Okay, because it's not on the version that I.
There are some changes. We have some changes.
See, I don't have that on the version that I.
Yeah, I don't have that on my version. Fundraising is two words. And I actually.
Get a new version of this in our packet, or?
Yeah, I have the old version.
Yeah, once you came to the.
Version.
Okay.
Where did you get your version?
From Dr. Provost.
Where did you get your version?
From me?
Yes, please. Please. Use that as your motion.
Sorry, didn't see that. Okay. It's the old one. Gotcha. Okay. So yes, I have the newer version. I'm so sorry. I don't know what happened with this. But so I would move to amend the policy to have all instances of fundraising be one word instead of two.
Second.
Well, can, do we vote on that amendment first? I have others.
I have another amendment.
Yeah. But why don't you keep going? Why don't we let her keep going? She has more to say.
Yeah, I have all the fixes first. I mean, it's.
Did you just read the fixes?
Two sets.
Yeah.
Oh, do it all at once?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to do it from the beginning. So fundraising events, I would move to amend the policy to read as follows. Fundraising events, fundraising one word. The principal of a school is responsible for approving or denying a request for fundraising, comma, if theirs is the only school involved, period. Next paragraph, the superintendent or their designee.
Is responsible.
Same thing.
Okay. Is responsible for approving or denying a request for fundraising if more than one schools involves. Good enough?
Good enough.
That's not all. So somebody has to second that.
Second.
Second. So did you have a comment, Dr. Voss?
I apparently have the wrong version.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We all have the.
There is no right version.
Makes the newer one so much more special.
Yeah.
So there's been a motion made and seconded, meant to amend. Any comments about the amendments? Okay. All those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now, back to the main motion, which is to approve the policy as amended. Any further comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving this as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we're on to DKC.
DKB or?
DKC.
C. C is next.
You just finished DFH.
Okay, so we can go to Policy DKC, Expense Reimbursements. And that only has a small suggested, well, a few small suggested changes. We had amended it to read Personnel and School Department officials who incur expenses and carrying out their authorized duties will be reimbursed by the school department in accordance with the travel policies set forth by the city of Northampton upon submission of a properly completed and approved voucher and any supporting receipts required by the superintendent. We added an S in the first sentence of the next paragraph. When official travel by personally-owned vehicles is authorized, mileage payment will be made at the rate currently approved by the city of Northampton. However, monthly travel statement in an amount established by the committee will be paid to the superintendent, business manager, and others authorized by the committee through collective bargaining for required to travel regularly within the school system on business. And that was updated, the MASC policy was updated in 2016.
So could you make a motion to approve that with those amendments?
To approve Policy DKC with those amendments?
Second. Okay. Any, Ms. Buscansky?
So why is the third paragraph indented, different, what's, what's happening in that last paragraph? Is there a reason for that, or?
It's probably just been cut and paste in.
Okay, that's totally possible. I just.
Formatting goes off so easily if you, so.
I can give you an official answer in one second.
Mine's perfect. I don't know which part.
I don't.
Some glasses cleaner.
Okay, so maybe we just fix that.
I think that that, yeah, so that's a formatting issue.
Yeah.
It's just the paragraph. It's just the.
No, I think actually, I'm, oh, you asked the hard questions. So.
Stumper.
No, I'm serious. Let me just check if you can.
So close to voting.
I think it was just formatting. That paragraph is identical to that section policy. If I had.
And then I have a second one.
Sure, sure, please.
Why don't you ask that one?
Go with that one.
Which is, just to clarify, that first sentence of the third paragraph, so a school committee member in order to have their travel request reimbursed has to have prior approval of the school committee? But have we, has, have any school committee members had their travel reimbursed, and have we voted to reimburse?
So that was a question that came up in Subcommittee because of the way it's phrased about travel.
Yeah.
I don't know that anyone submitted their travel expenses.
That's what I'm kind of curious about.
So I usually just pay for my own. I, I guess.
Me too, but it doesn't mean everything else does.
And so I think that if someone wanted to reimburse, they would.
So you want to keep that in for.
Yeah, it's got to be the school committee. It can't be the superintendent approving it.
So particularly that we're like.
Because they'd be approving the travel of the.
School committee.
Right. No, no, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to kind of clarify because I don't remember voting in the past, you know, three and a half years on any travel.
Nobody, right.
Nobody's putting.
Nobody puts it in.
And then it would have to be obviously budgeted. So we have to have a line item that has money.
It would have to be approved ahead of time before the school committee members travel. Okay, just wanted to clarify that policy.
Just to clarify for full transparency, I do think there have been instances where school committee members have been reimbursed, and it hasn't been voted on primarily because I wasn't focusing in on this policy. So in the past, I think there may have been two or three times, and my interpretation has been if there's been money in the school committee, professional development lined, it hasn't been claimed, then I've been okay with, with sending that up for approval. But as we're now aware of this policy, I think that would have to change if this passes. And before, if someone is anticipating putting in a travel request, they would have to get authorization from the school committee to, to do that.
Well, it's interesting because if a school committee member goes to a MASC conference or workshop or a day or whatever, we don't, we don't vote on it as a school committee for them to attend the professional development. And that money is taken out of our professional development budget. So it seems a little odd that we would focus, we'd zero in on travel.
You know, it's interesting you say that because I'm pretty sure we're supposed to vote on the professional development things too.
Well, I think that would be really good to know.
Like, no, going back to it, I, I do think that, I mean, this is kind of why I want us to go through all of our policies systematically. But I do, I do think that I.
Well, maybe at the next meeting.
I will, I will look into that, yes. But.
We could all look into it.
But it only makes sense. I mean, we only have, we have a limited amount of money. Some of the conferences are very expensive. some of the differences are very expensive, particularly if you were to pay to fly and pay for lodging, just two people on a 10-person committee going could eat up the entire budget. So I do think that we should probably vote on it to make sure that it's equitable and to make sure that one person isn't using all the resources, or that we agree that, you know, on a kind of plan of attack, is it better to have 10 of us go to one event or to divide it up so that there's always someone and we'll report back? So, yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable to have the policy, it's just if we have the policy, we should probably call it.
Right, exactly, that's what, that's what I was really wondering about.
Yeah, so I think that it was mostly most...
Most of us have just not asked for our tools in...
Okay.
But I did get back there.
Call the Jamaica Conference?
But I did get back to you the answer. So the reason that the formatting is off is because the original policy was formatted differently and had different...
I'm sorry.
Do it.
So it is, well, it's not just a format, it's also a change. It's a, it's a tiny change.
But you've read the change.
Do you want...
But you've read the change.
You have it.
You read the change in an motion.
You have a change, but...
The change is on the...
Format it, so it just, that's the idea.
It's fine, perfect. Thanks. You all could do this, you could look at the policy, you could look at the policy, you could compare it.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded to approve this policy as, as the amended, as proposed, amended by the committee and by Ms. Fallon. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, DKB, salary deductions.
Yes, the last one is Policy DKC, DKB, salary deductions. So...
This is my favorite.
Reduction of Ms. Fallon's policy.
This is a funny story.
I love revision.
So this is one that I will be honest, you know, when we make these decisions, we weigh a lot of factors. First, we compare it to the current MASC policy, and we did, and they've eliminated it. But then we always consult our experts and invite them to our meetings, and Kami was at this meeting, and she really did think that there, it was important to just to maintain the language that the school district shall not act as a collection agent for an employee's debts except when it is required to do so by court order. Apparently, it's an issue that does come up about, please deduct this from my paycheck or that from my paycheck, and so it's a very simple, one-line policy that we're proposing, and quite honestly, they do not have that. We're asking that you remove all the antiquated contract references and just put these collective bargaining agreements and individual employee contracts. But we do, and, you know, keep the legal references, but we do think that it's important that if someone asks that we have the policy showing, like, "I'm sorry, it's our policy that we do not do this," as, and it's also our practice, so. So I would move to accept Policy DKB as amended.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much for those policy updates. We now have the Business Administration Report, Personnel Report, and the Superintendent's Report, and I believe you're now playing, now you're playing Kami.
That's right.
Kami.
So, so you have the monthly expenditure report in your packet. There's nothing really noteworthy about it. The bottom line is an appropriate level for this time of year. There are some individual accounts that are running negative balances at this time, but that will be resolved through transfers later on in the year, so there is no, nothing that I need to advise the school committee about regarding monthly expenditures. There, Kami did not give a list of gifts that I accepted over $1,000, so I'm going to assume that I didn't accept any gifts over $1,000 since the last, last meeting. You also see the payroll warrants, which were signed by your designee. Hearing no questions, I'll move on to the Personnel Report. You can see that we had 17 new hires and one separation. That, do not be alarmed about a potential loss of position control there. The reason that we have so many more hires than separations is we started the year with several positions unfilled that were filled early on in the course of the month, so that's why those are there.
Excellent.
So then I'll go on to my Superintendent's Report. I'd like to start with an update on our transportation services. At the time of the last regular school committee meeting, there were four Durham buses without permanent drivers. Over the course of the last two weeks, permanent drivers have been placed on three of the four routes. B2 is the last route still needing a permanent driver. A potential driver for B2 has been identified. He has completed the 60-hour training and is awaiting a test date with the RMV. Yesterday, Durham experienced a high volume of driver absenteeism, which resulted in their calling in a substitute driver and navigator all the way from Framingham to cover B2. So that did lead to some confusion. Today, a driver familiar with the route was back on B2. The placement of permanent drivers on the other three buses has made a positive difference for students. I sincerely hope that the designated driver for B2 receives an early appointment and has a successful road test so that our children can experience greater consistency in their school transportation if they're riding Route B2. Next, I'd like to share some experiences from, am I doing something wrong?
No, no, I was just saying, I was just like, I think that was my kid's route. Like, I'm going to my memory, South Street neighborhood, yeah, B2.
B2.
Okay, so next, I'd like to share some of my experiences from the inaugural Symposium of PES, which stands for In Pursuit of Equity, Accountability, and Success for Latinx Students in Massachusetts Schools. I chose to attend this conference because my great concern for equity in our district remains with our Latinx students, and especially for those who happen to be ELs. In a couple of weeks, I will share achievement data showing that in many places, our district's students perform favorably compared not only to the district, not only to the statewide averages for their subgroups, but also for their comparable districts and comparable schools. The notable exception are Latinx students, who tend to do worse in Northampton than in their peer districts or their peer schools. And they also are the fastest-growing population in Massachusetts public schools, so the importance of doing better for them is becoming a more urgent concern for me, and I would argue that it should be a much more urgent concern for the whole district. I was quite inspired by some of the tools and strategies that Dr. Estella Bencimong shared for implementing what she calls equity-minded teaching policy and leadership. I also attended a session run by the Springfield Public Schools on their 100 Males to College program, which just reaffirmed what I always felt, that our colleagues in urban districts have to work twice as hard in order to be recognized half as much. We can learn a lot from them. We should not always look to the highest-performing and high-wealth districts for models. I do think there's a little bit of arrogance in that, arrogance that I am guilty of myself. There are a lot of great models coming for us now out of districts that may not do so well on accountability reports, and it's too bad that Ann wasn't here to hear that because I think she happens to work in one of those districts that's doing great things but struggles because of the way we measure student achievement. What I took away from the day was the need to make learning relevant for students, a theme that was reinforced this morning when Northampton High School student Lane Hall Witt addressed a roomful of adults, including other superintendents, the Massachusetts Secretary of Education, the Director of the Rennie Center, and the Executive Director of the Urban League of Springfield on the conditions of education in Massachusetts. Reading the body language in the room, I think the adults were much more interested in what Lane had to say than what the secretary or anyone else had to say. And what he said was exactly the same thing that the Secretary of Education had to say, and basically what I heard Pedro Noguera say in his keynote at the PES conference last Friday, which was that our students need different learning experiences than the ones that many of us have had. They require more hands-on learning and more supportive environments and real direct connections to employment opportunities in the real world. For them, the abstraction of taking a high-level course because it may increase their opportunities to get into a selective four-year college that may then lead to an opportunity in the real world is just too many steps away from the concerns that students are bringing and the buttons that we need to be pushing to keep them motivated in learning. So I'm glad we've started down this path, and I think as we develop a more sophisticated, equity-minded way of thinking, we should continue to push for new ways of learning that may be more appropriate for students who are not doing so well with right now. So to your point about other pathways, other internships, other ways of doing education, I'll just add, sort of anecdotally, my conversation with interim principal Valen Court since the time of our last meeting, when we were talking about enrollment of students in high-level math courses or science courses, which are the only ones that count on that report. We were talking about looking at the whole range of experiences that fall into that category for the Department of Education, and there are a lot of courses that are considered high-level math and science that aren't necessarily AP classes. They're hands-on learning experiences that we could build up from the, from the coursework that we've already started with Project Lead the Way at the middle school. So we are, our conversations have been around, okay, how can we get more students involved in higher-level courses by making the higher-level courses more interesting for students? So all these things are sort of coming together for me right now. That's, that's really where my mind is and really where I think our needs are as a district, and what I hope some of the discussion will be about in two weeks when we talk about MCAS scores.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. Um, let's see, we have an executive session that's on the agenda. We will not be coming back to an open session, so our, we do have future business and meeting dates that are listed on the agenda for all to read and see, so I wouldn't, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Make a motion to, during to executive session, request for an executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Northham Association of School Employees, whereas an open session would have a detrimental effect, and further details would compromise the reason for going into executive session. School committee will move into the adjacent area in the JFK Library during executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I need a roll call vote on this?
Senator Markowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Harverna?
Yes.
Mr. Rebecca Zansky?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Lonny Kossman?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter Moore?
Yes.
Susan Bog?
Yes.
Mr. Edward Zehuski?
Yes.
Okay, so I need to inform the public that we will be now moving into an executive session because to hold this conversation in open session would compromise our bargaining position, and then I also want to inform the public that we will adjourn directly from executive session and not return to open session, so you don't have to wait for us to come back. Okay, with that, we will now move into executive session.